This conference will now be recorded.
Access. Randy, would you please review the meeting rules for us this evening?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda related items has been moved to the beginning of the meeting. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the board of commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please keep your microphone or telephone on mute to avoid any background noise that may cause interference in the meeting. Staff may mute your microphones if needed. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name, address, and question into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will read your question aloud for the board to hear. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. It's sure an orderly and respectful meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Moving on to item C, just an announcement that the Board of Commissioners did meet in executive session to discuss legal and personal matters on January 19th and on February the 2nd, which is right before tonight's meeting. There are no announcements tonight, so courtesy of the floor is our next agenda item. Is there anyone here tonight who'd like to address the board on a non-agenda item? Like we have, let's take the person on the floor. Sure, you come up to the microphone, please, and get your name and address for the board. Welcome.
My name's William Stanley. I live at 2913 Ma Chuck Road in South Whitehall. It's actually right below in Mechanicsville, that's basically where it is. And I'd like to address the board on a concern that I have concerning the JARIS new development, that they're planning everything in the north part of the South Whitehall. And not what they're planning to do within the property, it's what they're planning to do outside the property. From the preliminary plan that I saw, I think it was back in August or October 2020, they gave a little overview of what they're planning to do, and they showed a couple of traffic lights along Ma Chuck Road. And I think another one on North Cedar Crest also. And I feel that right now the traffic is complete, it's a complete overflow of traffic in the morning and afternoon on Ma Chuck and Cedar Crest, as you know. And if we start adding traffic lights, because of new developments, it's just going to make our life worse as far as flow of traffic on Ma Chuck. And I think there's ways of, I put a lot of thought in this, I live out there, and I've been there forever, and I think you could probably get by with one traffic light on Ma Chuck at the old Trojan exit and keep the traffic light at Parkland that's there already, and keep all the traffic in the new development. And it would alleviate a lot of the problems for people commuting and expand the roads and so forth. But that's something, I just wanted to make it, you know, that I have a complaint or a concern of what's going, you know, transpiring, at least it appears on their first draft of their blueprints, they're adding traffic lights. And if you put a traffic light at Mechanicsville, the Ma Chuck Road, it's just going to back all the way up into Mechanicsville. And it's just going to be worse with the trucks that we have there, you know, trucks, the stone trucks using their brakes, the traffic trucks with the tractor trailers that are going to be added from the North Whitehall developments, they're planning warehouses in Armory or Ironton, we're going to get hammered. It's just, it's going to be unbearable. If they go through without stopping, at least they're passing through without stopping, you know, it's a, it's a big difference when a truck stops and when it drives by. And that's all I'd like to say at this time, and I just appreciate the opportunity to let you know that I have a concern on that and hopefully be addressed as we move forward. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that before the board. Appreciate it.
I was wondering if we could put that on old business, or maybe Dave Manhart, you could follow up with that as we go forward with the comp plan? Thank you.
And Dave, just as a follow-up, the plan, sketch plan that was presented to the board, has it made any progress in the township?
I was, let me see if I can get this where, this was the, was this for the JARIS sketch plan?
Yes.
It has not.
Okay.
We do have an update that we'll provide probably Thursday or Friday, but we have not seen a sketch plan submitted.
And is there a way to incorporate these comments in the CD department so we can address these concerns?
Yes. Yeah, so we can address some of the concerns, certainly when we get to the comp plan, land use element, transportation element, and then also when anything comes from JARIS as far as sketch plans, we can address concerns related to traffic lights and improvements at that time.
Very good.
But right now, it's premature to really discuss much of it, you know, it's all speculation right now.
Understood.
I just need a clarification. I've got like three reference points here, and I'm not clear. So Mr. Stanley referenced, I think, August 2020, which is when JARIS came in and made a presentation.
Yes.
I previously asked for a copy of that presentation, I didn't follow through to see whether we actually have that.
I don't know that we have it.
Yeah, that was the answer I got maybe nine months ago.
Yeah.
And then we had a conversation that there was a meeting in summer of last year where something less than a sketch plan was discussed but not submitted.
Correct.
And now Commissioner Kelly has just referred to a sketch plan review with the board, and I don't know that we have a sketch plan that's been reviewed with the board.
No, there has not.
The one that we were talking about?
We were talking about that one.
The presentation that they made before.
Yeah, that's what I thought you might mean. That's why I was trying to connect the dots there.
Yes, thank you. And Dave, was there any, you were motioning, is there a comment in the chat?
There is, but it's very long, and I don't know if it was intended for people online to read, or he wanted me to read it, or he wanted me to put them on. I do have Amy Fells, let me unmute. We're going to try, so we have new capabilities where people online can speak through the speakers here. We're going to try that. If it doesn't work, we'll go back to typing your question in the chat. Amy, I am going to unmute your microphone. Amy F. two.
I just unmuted myself, is that okay?
We got you, we can hear you.
Okay. All right, so my name is Amy Fells, and I live at 1718 Penns Crossing. And I have requested to speak to all of you tonight to bring to your attention the situation regarding construction behind my home on Penns Crossing. I have come to learn recently that there exists a township ordinance that loud outdoor construction cannot take place on Sunday. The house behind me was doing just that on a particular Sunday. I inquired and commented to Monica Hodges about the noise and construction on a weekend, and thanks to her intervention, she was able to let the contractors know that they cannot do this. However, it continued again this past Sunday. She and I both had to contact the police before the police finally made their way to the site and informed the workers that they had to leave. The workers responded that they were told by the contractor to work and had to wait to hear from the contractor before leaving. They began working around 8:15 a.m. Sunday morning and finally left around 10 a.m. I am disturbed that after having been notified that they weren't allowed to do this on Sunday, they proceeded to still work loudly. Additionally, the construction on this particular house has been starting around 7 a.m. Saturday mornings. I understand that the township does permit work to begin at 7 a.m. However, I think there should be an amendment to this rule to apply towards the remainder of construction to take place for this project. I think it is completely inconsiderate that week after week, current residents have to wake up to screaming, cursing, trucks beeping, hammering, nailing, and so on after working all week and wanting to sleep later on a Saturday. I personally wake up Monday through Friday at 5 a.m., and I should not on a continual basis have to hear what I hear on a Saturday morning. I am not suggesting changing this rule to encompass the entire township. I am requesting that you not allow any loud construction on the remaining houses to be built before 9 a.m. on a Saturday. I would like to add that I have been in my backyard and had to listen to men cursing at the tops of their lungs to other residences. The overall level of consideration by the contractors and workers for the current residents has been awful. We have had an enormous amount of trash in the last year, last year or so, blowing from dumpsters down toward our yards. My backyard looked like a garbage dump last year. I contacted Tom Harper, and he very kindly and attentively came to my house to look and take pictures. He contacted the contractors, but it took three times of him visiting, taking pictures, and contacting the contractors before there was an improvement. Some of the trash is still out there, some of it blew into my yard for my puppy to eat and swallow. This is unacceptable. I had to request the weeds be mowed because for years they were unkept, and in the summer the wind would blow the weeds and debris into our pool. And then there was the time when there was months and months and months of bulldozing and dirt spraying into our pool and into our backyard. I have had to wear noise-canceling headphones often when trying to work from my computer to concentrate. I am asking you to please enforce the current Sunday ordinance. The contractors ignored their first notification, so I think they should be fined. I am asking that the remainder of the building not be allowed to start until 9 a.m. on Saturdays. I am asking for more awareness and consideration for trash, mowing the unpurchased land, language of the construction workers, and how the building affects the current homes as far as increased dirt on our properties. Finally, I would like to share with you that I am Jewish, and there are holidays in our year that are major holidays similar to the religiousness and holiness of Christmas and Easter. One such holiday is Sukkot, and it commands us to make a little hut like a dwelling outside our home and eat and even sleep in there for a week. During this past Sukkot, as my husband and I excitedly built and decorated our succah and prepared to enjoy the peacefulness of nature and the holiness of our holiday, the house behind us began its major building on the wooden walls. They worked out there until well after sundown, and we had to listen to banging, hammering, nailing, trucks rumbling, and beeping. I am asking that you please look at calendars and be more aware of other religious holidays that deserve the same peace and quiet that those who celebrate Christmas and Easter receive, and notify contractors to find a way to be more considerate or adjust their schedule. If you need some sort of liaison to help explain the circumstances, I would be happy to provide an explanation and knowledge regarding certain Jewish holidays. The bottom line is we've been dealing with years and years of disruptive life due to the construction behind us, and there is a long way to go before it is finished. Our quality of life should be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Amy.
I am asking you to please put this under old business so we can follow up on it. I do believe that we need to revisit this ordinance and discuss it. We have to keep in mind our residents who are here, they deserve a good quality of life, and we have a lot more building yet to be done. Rich Farm is coming, a lot of development on the horizon, and we need to be very considerate of our residents, considerate of their holidays, and I don't think it's asking too much to just revisit and look at times and starting times. Thank you.
Clarification, Commissioner Hodges. Question, what exactly do you want to put under old business? Do you want to put the ordinance and review of the ordinance under old business, or do you want to put the specific complaint?
I would like to.
Under old business, or both?
I would like both, because I want it to continue, I want it to be addressed, and I would hopefully like to discuss it at a workshop.
I missed the ordinance workshop. Was the noise ordinance discussed at that workshop?
No, it was.
No.
It was briefly, it was on.
For fireworks only.
Exactly, exactly, but it was not on for this, but at that point, I was not aware of the trouble that Mrs. Fells was having.
Randy, can you provide some direction for us to begin to assist this concern and resident?
Sure. I did speak with Tom Harper at length today about this exact topic. What he's working on right now is some comparative research from surrounding municipalities in terms of how everybody else's noise ordinance looks, duration of hours, you know, especially on the weekends. And then I think for the board, you know, if the direction is for staff to provide an update to the ordinance, that's something we can certainly put on our front burner and get back here in front of the board as soon as possible, if that is something this board is interested in. But that's the pleasure of the board.
I would agree that it's something we should take a look at in light of these concerns, and I do agree with Commissioner Hodges, we do have, even in this development, a lot of growth still to be built. And I think one of the things that I don't have enough information on is a tally of the type of noise complaints the township has received since we've adopted that ordinance, and maybe if we could get a report to the board so we've got an understanding of the types of issues. You know, I know it was a new ordinance, so maybe we can look at this as well as any others and open up the ordinance and see if it needs any additions or deletions or tweaks to make it more personalized to the township.
I would concur. From a few different standpoints, it's sort of a common practice that when you enact something like a new ordinance, which is now what, at least two years ago, let some time go by, you see how it works out, and then you do like a lessons learned, how's it going? So even if we didn't have this complaint, it's a proper thing to do, just how would that ordinance work out? You know, was it perfect, or does it need to be changed in some regard? And then with regard to this specific complaint, I concur, we should follow through on it. Mrs. Fells is complaining about an individual house construction, but based on our proximity, Monica Hodges, who lives close, and I, who live just a little further away, we experienced the earthwork that seemed like it was, you know, a seismic event when it was occurring. So I'd say paying attention to new construction or phases of new construction, which is the initial development and then the individual houses is appropriate.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Commissioner Osborne, yes?
Thank you, President Kelly. I just have a question. I remember, I'm going to say late last year, there was discussion about a quality of life ordinance. So my question is, was there any reference to noise in that quality of life ordinance that, you know, was tabled at the time? And if so, if you could pull out that language and maybe share it, if it's different than the actual noise ordinance that we had adopted?
I'm not recalling off the top of my head, that's certainly something I can look into and provide that information back to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, is there a follow-up?
Just to follow up, one thing with the quality of life ordinance that was brought before last year is it was more of a enforcement mechanism than the actual ordinance language. So it was basically put in place as a quicker way to enforce the ordinances.
And then that document where that proposed ordinance would then just reference the existing noise ordinance?
It was kind of structured somewhat like that, but a lot of it was incorporated in to the quality of life ordinance, so certain things fell into that enforcement procedure. So there's different ways that it can be structured, but the quality, that ordinance was primarily directed at.
Enforcement.
Enforcement.
Got it.
And the violation process and how long it takes for a violation to go through and things like that, because right now you have to follow a certain 60, 30 days in notice, and, you know, you can't just tick it. So that's kind of where that was, and that's kind of broad picture, I don't have the details, but that was the kind of idea of that.
I think I suggest, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I was going to make a suggestion. I know we have a workshop scheduled next Wednesday. Is there a way we can get a little snapshot of some of this? I know we probably don't have enough time to delve into it and add it to the agenda, but to just get an overview of what is in place, what type of complaints we've had, violations given, warnings given, and at least a starting point to begin to talk about this.
Dave, just a quick question, that was done by Tom Harper, correct?
That's correct.
His presentation?
Yes.
I do remember those. Thanks.
President Kelly, I do think we could probably pull together the number of noise ordinance violation complaints that we've received through the police department, and I believe Tom has some comparative research already compiled, so we could certainly add this to the workshop meeting next Wednesday, if the board would like.
If that's the agreement of the board, I think that would be wise. Commissioner Hodges?
I just wanted to add that while I think it's fair to look at other ordinances and other townships that are surrounding, I also believe that we have to do what's best for our residents, and a later start time might give our residents some relief and just be more sensitive to the needs of our residents and what's going on in their proximity is really important. So thank you. I also wanted to thank Chief Dorni. Tom is not here tonight. Randy, thank you, and all the other commissioners who helped this go forward. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments this evening? Okay, very good, we will move along then. The next agenda item is the approval of the Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes. The first one on our agenda is the January 12th Board of Commissioners' ordinance workshop meetings. Has the board had the opportunity to look at those? Are there any questions? Any questions? I'm sorry, I would take a motion then to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Very good, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the next, we have actually two this evening, we have the January 19th Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes. Are there any questions from the board?
I have one comment that I told Tracy Fennell right before this meeting. On page seven, item 11B, I request that you had the point that Pendott will be engaged in the Route 309 Ridgeview intersection study.
Is there any discussion to the board or any concern with adding that to that particular item?
No concern.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the January 19th meeting minutes as amended by Commissioner Wilk?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. There are no ordinances on our agenda tonight, we'll move into our resolutions. Resolution 7A, I believe Dave Manhart, we're going to have you present this evening. Thank you.
So this is a resolution to update our fee schedule. The fee schedule changes are laid out in the memo attached. The primary changes, finance proposed a change for the check return fee from $35 to $36, and then police department changed their overtime rates, and there were some changes in parks and rec fee, and everybody's here to answer questions, should they have any. CD's involvement in the fee schedule is Greg kind of prepares the document, and takes all the edits in and then prepares them. So if there's individual questions related to any of the changes, staff's here to answer those questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the board on the fee schedule? Commissioner Hodges?
I do have a question about the camp charge. It's $10. That is crossed out, $10 again in blue. Is this the same for residents as it is for any participant? And I'm taking it this is for our summer camps, is that correct?
So that camp charge is mainly for a, we have a local Islamic group that uses that pavilion Monday through Thursday from 9 to noon. The half-camp charge allows us to rent the pavilion for a half-day to a local camp, this one or any other one, and then allows us to re-rent the pavilion that evening to a second group if they so desire, rather than have them pay the full rate for a pavilion rental if they're only there two or three hours. It doesn't make a lot of sense internally, we thought, to charge the full-day rental rate. There were even discussions as far as should we look at hourly rates during the peak of COVID, because we were getting requests for school board and, or, you know, different folks that wanted to use the pavilion but only wanted it for an hour, they didn't want to rent it for the whole day. We've seen those requests pretty much disappear, so we don't feel there's a need to add that to the fee schedule. But the half-day camp charge was simply just to assist the residents that are looking for a shorter rental that are actually running a summer camp at the program, or at our facility.
I just, I have a follow-up to that. Is it $10 per participant regardless of which pavilion? Because I know our pavilions have different rental rates based on their sizes and.
No, they do not.
They're all the same?
Yeah.
I didn't know that. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Okay, do we have a motion to amend the fee schedule for administrative fees?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to B, I'm going to ask Chief Dorni to please explain this resolution for us.
Yes, this is just the process, we're in the hiring process again, and just making the request for the Board of Commissioners to extend a conditional offer of employment for entry-level patrol officer in the South Whitehall Township Police Department to applicant number 45830. This is the next person on the list. The last person did not move forward in our process, so this would be the next person we'd be giving a conditional offer to to start a background investigation. Again, does not mean that we'll absolutely employ them, just gives us the opportunity to start the process.
So this is the same procedure we did at our last meeting with?
Yes.
Very good.
Sadly, I think we'll be doing this a lot.
Okay. Is there any board discussion on this resolution? Anything from the public? Okay, I would need a motion then to approve the resolution extending conditional offer of employment to the entry, excuse me, entry-level position police officer in the township's police department to candidate number 45830.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're very welcome. On to item C, a resolution approving sewer planning module for GoPuff project at 4750 Tillman Street. I believe Herb Bender is going to help us with this one. Good evening.
There we go. On behalf of GoPuff, a delivery service for food, drinks, medication, and home needs, Bennett Family Properties LLC is proposing a shell enclosure off an existing building at 4750 Tillman Street. The proposed shell to the existing unclosed 11,038 square feet structure will purposed as a product storage area, alcohol storage area, receiving office space, and a dining prep area. Developers respect. Developers respectfully requesting a sewage flow increase of six hundred and five gallons per day that equals out to be two point seven five EDUs.
Thank you, Herb. Are there any questions from the board on this resolution? Nothing. Anything from the public? Monica, sure.
Herb, I'm sorry. If you could just tell me, if this is where the Ollies property is, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So you're looking at Ollies. What side of it is, is this shell? Is it the left of?
Left side, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
If there are no questions, and I would need a motion to approve the resolution approving sewer planning module for Go Puff Project at forty-seven fifty Tillman Street. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Herb. Don't go. We have another one. We have a resolution approving a sewer planning module at the Flex Building at twelve fifteen Hausman Road.
Right. Forge Development Company is proposing to construct a ninety thousand square foot industrial warehouse facility on a single ten acre piece of land they own at twelve fifteen Hausman Road. Currently, there are no uses identified for this building, therefore flows are based on a hundred employees working on site. Forge Development Company is respectfully requesting sewer allocation of a thousand gallons per day, which comes out to be four point five EDUs.
Thank you.
And the other thing with this one is since there is no, we don't know what the occupant's going to be. We can keep an eye on this and review it in a year also. That way we will see the actual flows to get them corrected if they are doing more.
But that would be a follow up that the township would do or would the developer have to report to us if they have more?
What we would do is base that off the water bills.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions from the board on this request? Commissioner Hodges?
It's not particularly on this request, but I just had a question for you, Herb. What happens? Is this all going to Klein's Island? Is that correct? How and when is there a capacity for Klein? Do you?
How it works is you purchase allocation and, I mean, I'm sorry, not allocation, capacity from Klein's Island. So you only have so much capacity that you can send to Klein's Island. So if I'm not mistaken, we are around three hundred thousand left for our capacity of gallons left and which we can't go any higher than that. So we do have running totals of all that. So as these come in, it gets deducted off the total. So when we are out, we either have to purchase more if there's more available or we're done. One or the two options.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Yeah.
Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, President Kelly. Actually, Commissioner Hodges, you kind of took my question because I was going to wait until the last one. But I just want to make sure. I knew that there was probably a bank, you know, if you call it that. But the way this works, this is the question, the way it works is there is no artificial management of the remaining EDUs. It is first come, first served, regardless of how much is left. Is that correct?
Yes. Well, yes and no, because if you come in with your plan, like Ridge Farms, for example, they're a ten year build, but they came for all their allocation right away, which we didn't allow that. We put it in two different phases.
That's what I was remembering. Yes. So it may, it may be circumstances are such that when phase two for that particular project comes, we may need to purchase more capacity.
What we do do is if you're asking for a lot of allocation, we look at what we have and we do put that number into the mix to draw it out already. So no one will be in the middle of a development and then we have no more allocation to give you.
So the three hundred thousand EDUs remaining in the bank, if, if that's what we call it, includes the allocation already given to, for phase one only, not phase two.
No, we, we took, we took the full project out of what's left.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. Sorry to prolong that.
No, that's okay.
I just want to ask, Commissioner Osborne just said three hundred EDUs. Is it three hundred thousand EDUs or three hundred thousand gallons?
Three hundred thousand gallons.
Yeah, not EDU.
Oh, not EDU.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That makes more sense. Made your difference.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I just want to, in, in different words. So after the Bridge Farm total allocation, there's three hundred thousand gallons left.
Roughly. I don't have that exact number in front of me, but that's the ballpark number we're in.
All right.
Very good. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, I will need to have a motion for the resolution approving the sewer planning module for the Flex Building at twelve fifteen Hausman Road. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? Very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And we have one more. We have a resolution approving a sewer planning module for nineteen thirty-three Harold Avenue.
All right. VW Consultants LLC on behalf of its client is respectfully requesting four hundred and forty-six gallons per day, two EDUs of new sewer allocation for opposed, proposed two family dwelling unit to be constructed at nineteen thirty-three Harold Avenue in South Whitehall Township.
Thank you, Herb. Are there any questions from the board on this resolution? Any from the public? Okay, do I hear a motion for the resolution to approve the sewer planning module at nineteen thirty-three Harold Avenue?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second, very good. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Herb, thank you very much for presenting tonight. Our next resolution, I'm going to ask Andy, sorry, Randy to please present this for the board.
There are no problem. Let me just get it up on the screen here. Okay, so the resolution in front of us here tonight is part of the requirement from the agreement of sale. If the board recalls, back in November, the township passed a resolution approving the township's acquisition of the, the property off of Spring House Road, the, the twenty-seven acres at ten thirty-six Spring House Road. Part of that agreement of sale actually requires the township to deliver at closing a lease agreement to permit the continued and uninterrupted farming of the property by the current tenant and the tenant's heirs, successors, and assigns. So this resolution actually permits us to execute this farm lease, which I'll go into. I'll, I'll go over the highlights real quick, but closing is coming up here shortly. So part of our requirements again was to have this farm lease in order, ready for closing on the property. So the term would begin once closing commences, which again, it should be here in the next few weeks to a month. The tenant is supposed to provide written notice to the township on or before January first each year to indicate their interest in continuing farming of the premises. There is a rent associated with this lease. It equates to about a hundred dollars per tillable acre. So in this case, there's twenty tillable acres on the site, equating to about two thousand dollars per year. Fifty percent of that rent will be due April first, fifty percent will be due December fifteenth. The uses of the premises specifically for this farming lease is for purposes of farming and for no other purpose, but does include the sale of agricultural products at a farm stand, but does specifically exclude agretainment. The township still reserves the right for a small dog park on this property, a perimeter walking trail, the ability to correct any stormwater issues that lead to a difficulty of farming the property or in, in our nature to actually flooding Spring House Road during heavy rain events, as well as installing sidewalks along Spring House Road. The tenant does provide insurance for this farm lease, and those are really the highlights of the farm lease.
Very good. Thank you for explaining that for us, Randy. Are there any questions from the board on the farm lease resolution? Anything from the public? I will need a motion to approve the resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the execution and delivery of a farm lease with Donald Newhart, TA Newhart Farms, to permit continuing farming operations in accordance with the terms described there and contingent on the township's acquisition of land located at ten thirty-six Spring House Road from David T. Davis and Joanne S. Davis. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to the motions portion of our agenda. Our first motion is a motion requesting permission to proceed with purchase of air packs for Woodlawn Fire Department. I, our fire commissioner, Chris Skaravich, is presenting tonight.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
This first motion is the, we're requesting ARPA funds that were discussed about purchasing of air packs for the Woodlawn Fire, Fire Department. Purchase is going to include fourteen air packs, fourteen face pieces, and twenty-five air cylinders with, with logo bands on them so that we identified as South Whitehall Township or Woodlawn Fire Department's cylinders. The, the quote that came in on this is for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. And we were working with a budget of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven fifty, so we're under budget with, with that purchase. And that would be coming from the, the ARPA funding.
Very good. Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions from the board on this motion? None. Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, I need a motion then to approve requesting permission to proceed with the purchase of air packs for Woodlawn Fire Department.
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Chris, we have another motion before us tonight for you to present. This is a motion requesting permission to proceed with repairs to the damaged walls at Woodlawn Fire Department.
Yes, this is, we had damaged walls on the apparatus base at the Woodlawn Fire Station that has happened through the years due to weather and salt. We did get multiple bids in on this. We budgeted thirty thousand dollars for this project. And the, the bid came in for Belfort at twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-two, thirty-four to fix these walls in this project.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board on this?
Chris, I have a question for you. What are we doing about so it doesn't happen again in the future?
Go, we, it's, it's basically, we're going to have, prevent plowing of, of snow up against the building. And we're watching that we don't salt near the building or some things they're going to put in place. I would, I would inquire with Belfort and see if they're doing anything additional application as they're doing the repairs as if they're doing any kind of salt predanda and if, or whatnot, we could check in on that and see if they're able to do anything like that or they are planning on that. Other than that, our plan was to basically make a better effort of not allowing salt and, and stuff to be sprayed right against the building and not the snow plow against the building.
Chris, what is the budget, please?
The budget for this, while we budget it, we budgeted thirty thousand for this project.
All right, thank you.
And I was going to have the same question as Commissioner Kennedy did regarding if they're going to use a different type of material.
Yeah, I would have to check with Belfort and see if they have a different material that'll help with this, with this issue. But other than that, that, that our plan is like on the side of what we can do by preventing to put stuff against it. And then if you'd like, I'll get back to you as far as letting you know if they are using a separate, a specific material to prevent that corrosion from further happening.
I think that'd be a good idea.
I could do that, yes.
Yeah. Chris, I have a question for you too. There's a pretty big difference in these bids.
There is.
There is, yeah, fifty-six to forty and twenty-eight. Is there anything different than these companies with the higher bids are doing?
I think the companies with the higher bids were looking at trying to do bigger removals of, of it. And Belfort came and went with what needed to be replaced.
Okay.
And I think there was additional, they were going to go fully up on the walls, but the problem wasn't completely up the walls. It was all at the bases of the walls. So Belfort seemed like they were going after the problem and not anything additional on that issue is, is what I gathered it to be.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the board? Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I actually had seen this problem a couple of months ago. And what I observed and, and had conversations with the chief there is part of this problem is maybe, I'll phrase it that way, a sloping issue so that the water doesn't run off of the garage door, let's say, and down the driveway.
Right.
We call it that. It kind of puddles there. So it's just something to look at, Chris, you know, as this work is going on, you know, there's much more trained eyes than I.
Right.
But I think that's part of what contributed to this problem is, is the lack of drainage.
And that was at the, the front base? You saw that?
In the back.
In the back.
Yeah.
Back base.
That's where the work's being done, right?
There's some up at the, I believe, I believe it's three walls on the, on the apparatus floor. So it's the back, the side.
Yeah, okay.
And, and the, and the front also has, has some damage.
Okay, I didn't see the front, yeah. So, you know, just take a look at it.
Okay, yes.
Along Commissioner Kennedy's question, this would be something that if we could address the sloping, if that's part of the problem, it
Right.
probably would be beneficial to do that.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Any other comments by the board? Anything from the public? Okay, moving ahead then, I would need a motion to approve the request to proceed with repairs to the damaged walls at Woodlawn Fire Department.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
On to motion C. This is a motion to appoint two commissioners to the pension committee. This is a committee that reviews the township's pensions, and historically we have had two commissioners serve on this committee. So I will open the floor if there are two commissioners who would like to volunteer their time to serve on this committee.
President Kelly, I would be honored to, with the support of the board, be one of the members on the pension committee.
Very good, Commissioner.
Likewise, Commissioner Kelly, so would I.
Very good, thank you. Is there any other discussion or anyone else on the board who has an interest in serving? Okay, any other discussion by the board on this? Anything from the public? I need a motion to proceed then to appoint Commissioner Brad Osborne and Commissioner David M. Kennedy to the pension committee.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are going to move on to the correspondence and information items. And typically Randy takes care of this. I just had one quick comment I wanted to make before we started. I wanted to just talk about two of our planning commission members. Brian Height and Alan Tope were both recognized during the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission's meeting last week to, for their participation in training for with additional planning duties. Brian actually won an award for having the most hours. It was forty hours of classes that he had taken last year through the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. So I wanted to recognize both of them for their dedication and continuing to educate themselves as they serve the township. Thank you. Randy, if you would please help us then with this next section of correspondence regarding our vacancies.
Sure. So we, we do staff some vacancies on our boards and commissions. These are for, for everybody to, to understand, these are on the homepage of our website under the news section. So if you click on that news category, you'll be able to pull up, you'll be able to see all these vacancies as well as the volunteer board member application form. I do believe the board's interested in moving forward with, with the interviews here in the near future. So if, if you are interested in serving on one of our many boards and commissions, please do so, fill out the, the application form on the website as soon as possible. And you can send that into our office to my attention or Tracy Fennel's attention. So reviewing the vacancies real quick, we, we have one alternate vacancy on the Civil Service Commission. We have two vacancies on our Landscape Shade Tree Commission, one vacancy on our Parks and Recreation Board, one vacancy on our Planning Commission, and one alternate vacancy on our Zoning Hearing Board. We do have a few upcoming meetings here for the public's information. This information is also posted on our website. On Monday, February seventh, we'll have our Public Safety Commission meeting here at the Township and virtually at seven PM. Tuesday, February eighth, we'll have our Comprehensive Plan Workshop at seven PM. Wednesday, February ninth, our Civil Service Commission will meet at one PM. And also on Wednesday, February ninth, we'll have our Board of Commissioners Workshop at six PM. The topics being discussed that evening will be the flood mitigation study as well as the noise ordinance that we just discussed here tonight and new sub, new subcommittee formations. And then on Monday, February fourteenth, we will have our Parks and Recreation Board meeting at seven PM. Keep in mind, all of these are held in person as well as virtually. So the go-to meeting link is posted under each event on the, the website.
Thank you very much, Randy. I appreciate it. Are there any questions from the board on any of the items that were just reviewed? Thank you very much, Randy. I appreciate it. Are there any questions from the board on any of the items that were just reviewed?
I have a question and then I have something else. So I guess for Randy, um, at a, our previous meeting, uh, it was mentioned that the vacancy board applications are being accepted. I don't think you mentioned that, so I think it's worth mentioning.
Correct. We did receive one application for the, the vacancy board. The current term, I believe, did expire on twelve thirty-one, twenty-one, or until a successor is named, is how that's worded.
Right, okay. So we'll have to consider what we do move in for.
Correct, yep.
Alright.
Thank you for adding that. Commissioner Wilk?
My other item, I, I have a, uh, brief Finance Committee report. We have the first meeting of the new Finance Committee with Commissioner Kennedy joining the, the committee and myself with Randy Copes, Scott Barrett and Trish Dickert. That was held on January twenty-eighth. At the meeting, uh, Finance Director Scott Barrett reviewed the December twenty-twenty-one finance report. Finance Director Scott Barrett explained the twenty-twenty-one audit schedule. Uh, and then, um, Scott Barrett provided a draft fund balance policy to Commissioners Kennedy and myself. Uh, we agreed that we would review it and discuss it at the next Finance Committee meeting, which is on February seventeenth. And then after that, um, that fund balance policy would be sent to the full board for review and ultimately hopeful approval at a future VOC meeting. And the last item was, uh, Assistant Finance Director Trish Dickert explained the business privilege tax goal, uh, to increase the revenue and the methods that would be employed to achieve the goal. Uh, and the committee agreed that clear proactive communication on this subject is important for the program to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that update, Commissioner.
Can I just add, could I just add that it was my first meeting and it was, it was a very good meeting on behalf of Scott and Trish. Uh, and I'd just like to let everyone know that, that Scott did point out that our audits will be coming on time from now on. He's on track to get our audit for twenty-twenty-one on time and, uh, which I think the township will be happy for, for so many years not having audits.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that was good news to hear from Scott and, uh, and I'm gonna guarantee you that Mike and I will hold him to it.
Yeah, I, I have the detailed schedule he gave us, but I, I, I felt keep, keep, uh, the minutes high level.
Thank you both for that report. I appreciate the update to the full board. Are there any questions from the public then on any of these information items? Okay, moving along then to direction and discussion. Before we begin our first item, um, Randy, if you'd just allow me to do a short update. I just wanted to announce that there is an update to the request for quotes, um, for the proposal for a recruitment firm to assist a township as we search for a township manager. The request for quotes was posted to the township website on January seventh. Proposals would do on the twenty-eighth of January. And we're announcing that we did receive two proposals. The board will hold an information session with the firms to review these proposals. And at our next meeting on February sixteenth, we will include an agenda item with the board's consideration to select a recruitment firm as well as a motion to approve by the board. Any questions on that topic? Any comments? Thank you very much. Randy, then if you would please help us with our first direction discussion item, which is the Tillman Street Interchange.
Dave's gonna give a very, very brief general overview of the project.
Excellent.
So the Tillman Street Interchange Project at three oh nine, um, it's been on the books for a very long time. I just wanted to provide an update because we started receiving some calls at the township. The project is moving forward. Um, their latest project report says that work can begin in July of twenty-twenty-three with an estimated completion, and these are all estimated, completion date in twenty-twenty-five. So they're looking to start construction in twenty-twenty-three. The total project cost is, look, the estimate is close to fifty-five million. So it's a big project. There's a lot involved. The current phase that they're in and why we started receiving some calls is they're in the acquisition phase. So there's some properties that they need to acquire for additional right-of-way. They've sent out their initial letter, um, and then that, that just starts the process of acquiring the property, including appraisals and fair market value and all that. So I just wanted to make the board aware that this project is moving forward. Um, and when we get updates, we'll periodically come, come back and give you updates as, as they happen.
And just to clarify which intersection or interchange.
So this is the, if you're on three oh nine, the interchange to get down to Tillman, um, they're reconfiguring the whole, the whole thing. So the ramps, how there's stop signs now, there'll be longer approaches, better site distance. They're improving, and then down at the bottom, they're putting in stoplights at the intersection, so that it's gonna be a higher functioning intersection, an interchange, because it's the divided highway into a.
Or the in-southbound.
Yes, so it's on both sides, yep.
And do we have any idea how many parcels have, have been contacted for this right-of-way?
It's about a half dozen. Township has, is one of the property owners, um, so they'll be working through the process with the township on acquiring a piece, piece of, uh, the township property.
Thank you. Any other questions by the board?
I think it's obvious, it's, it's entirely a, it's entirely a PennDOT project, right? In other words, the township has no role in the project or funding or anything like that.
No.
We, well, that's, we, we do have some utilities that will need to move as part of this project.
Okay.
So there will be a fifty percent cost to the township, Herb. Right? And water.
Okay.
No longer.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? We do have one here, sir. If you could come to the microphone, give us your name and address, please.
Hi, I, I wasn't planning to talk, but I know some people that live in those homes that are being taken by PennDOT. And I've lived there like forty years, and somehow they didn't know that they would have to leave their homes. And in one particular family, they're, I mean, they're older, like in their eighties now, they've lived in those homes. Now they have to get out. And they can't really find a place to live. That's within their means. I, I don't see anything about it in the paper or anything. I just feel very bad, and I just wanted to say there are homes being taken. People have to leave and find another place to live.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. There's not, the township doesn't have any oversight of those.
It's a, it's a PennDOT project.
They're all state.
And, you know, we, we did receive some calls and we did, that prompted us to reach out to PennDOT and the project manager, and also talk to the acquisitions company. Um, so we have lines of communications with them. But if there are issues, feel free to contact us and we can reach out through our contact with the acquisition company. But it, it's, I do want to stress after speaking to the acquisitions company, it's not a quick process. It, it sounds like it's gonna take a little while, um, particularly because appraisers are hard to get right now. So it, it's gonna take some time. But if there are any concerns, please contact us at the township and we can relay those to the.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Are there any other questions on the Tillman Street project topic? Thank you. Then moving on, we're to item B, which is the summer playground partnership program, and Mike Cookett, if you would please present for us.
Hello again.
Good evening.
So I just wanted to kind of have a quick discussion, because this is, uh, coming down the pipeline pretty quickly. Um, and I know we have some new faces on the board, so I thought it'd be pertinent to kind of bring everybody up to speed on this. Historically, we've been the only township in the Parkland area that's run a summer playground program. Uh, pre-COVID, we were at max capacity with four hundred and fifty kids enrolled. That's a hundred and fifty at all three sites that, uh, we utilized. Um, we run this program in partnership with the school district, and we utilize their sites so that, uh, in case inclement weather or terribly hot days, we have access to a gymnasium and other indoor facilities. As you know, we don't own any current, uh, indoor facilities ourselves as a township. Um, so it's great partnership. Back in maybe October, November last year, I want to say I was contacted by the township managers in both North Whitehall and Upper McConge. North Whitehall recently hired a park and ref professional. Upper McConge has had one on board now for a while. Uh, and they were interested in starting a summer program this coming summer. They were chatting about doing it on their own, partnering up, what would make the most sense. I said, come on over, let's chat. Came up with kind of a game plan for what we think may make the most sense for all residents in all areas. And that would be to partner up to have consistent registration fees, staffing, uh, costs, you know, what we're paying, so we're not really conflicting or, or competing with each other for this, but rather we're working together to make sure that it's mutually beneficial for everybody. Um, and that's kind of how this came to be. So this was back in October, November of last year. I did bring it before the board, uh, at budget season time. This was budgeted for in the twenty-twenty-two budget to move forward with the partnership. Met again with the township managers from those two municipalities a few weeks ago. I ironed out some of the details and an agreement is kind of coming down the pipeline, um, that you will be seeing on February sixteenth. So I wanted to just bring that to your attention, see if there was any questions or, you know, any other background information you may want, whether it be now or before the sixteenth, I'd be happy to.
Alright, okay. So, um, I'm gonna bring this up, uh, this was discussed during the budget workshops. And then I know I had a conversation one day with Randy, Scott Barrett and you. And I, I'll tell you what I understand from those meetings, and I think it's worthwhile clarifying for everyone. So, yeah, there's, uh, and, um, our budget includes the expenditures, right?
Correct.
But there's also revenue. And setting aside this issue about the, the omission, right? I'm not bringing up the omission, okay? You've described that this is, uh, it's a zero-sum game, right? In other words, there's no net cost. We have revenue and expenditure, but it's like a, a, a net zero.
You got it.
Could you, okay, short answer's fine for me. If anyone wants an elaboration on that, please say so. Okay.
That's good.
Thank you.
My question is, at this late game, you already, I, I, I hate to assume anything. You've talked to Parkland about the, the schools up in North Whitehall and also with Upper McConge. And we are buying on all those schools and everything from them.
Yep, after we met with the two township managers, uh, I waited until we met with our board, got through the budget season to see kind of what, what the, you know, which way we, we may be leaning. Um, and then when it was put into the budget, that's when I, uh, contacted the school and got them on, on board a few weeks ago. Both Steve Walk and Dave Keppel were here, um, and they identified a school location in each of those municipalities that were. So the, the program, if the partnership were to go through how it's written, would we be, we would still have three sites. There would be one added in Upper McConge and one added in North Whitehall.
Are there any other questions or comments by the board?
So your purpose was to have a dialogue so that when you're back here on February sixteenth requesting approval, then we're, we're now edified, right? That, that's the purpose of this discussion tonight, is that correct?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if there's any questions or concerns about it. Alright, like I said, I knew there were some new faces there, so, we thought it was important to get in front of, because it's, this is, uh, this is our largest program, um, and this is a rather large change as well. So we just wanted to kind of make sure everybody kind of knew the brief history of it and that it is coming quickly.
Alright, I do have one more. You said pre-COVID, you were about four fifty. So what have you been, uh, since, with COVID hitting?
Uh, last year, we reduced numbers a little, um, simply to not have such crowded locations because of the pandemic, but we were still, by, by the time it was all said and done, uh, about a hundred and twenty-five kids or so.
What are you anticipating this sum?
A hundred and twenty-five kids at each site.
Each, okay.
Correct. So what, what we're doing and how we budgeted was, uh, historically, we've had about sixty percent South Whitehall Township children in our program, and forty percent coming from the other two municipalities. So we typically add a hundred and fifty at each site. We're expecting a hundred and twenty-five at each site this year, because we expect that many of those children will be attending the camps in there.
Sure, makes sense. Thanks.
So from a financial standpoint, to piggyback on Commissioner Wilk's question, we used to have a hundred and fifty at each site. Now we're gonna have one twenty-five. Doing the math quick, um, I know that we had two different rates. There was a resident rate and then a non-resident. So for the non-resident, the forty percent of the participants would have paid a higher rate, so, um, everyone's going to be paying the same. Are we, where is the rate going to, to land? Is it gonna be? What did South Whitehall residents pay last year? Do you have?
I believe it was two hundred and fifty dollars for a first child.
And then what did a non-resident pay?
Not have that information in front of me, and oh my goodness, it was over a year ago.
It was higher.
Yeah, actually, you know what? It may have been two hundred and fifty for the non-resident and two hundred for the resident.
And what do you propose will be, um, the cost?
Well, this year, whether we partner or not, I can tell you that unfortunately, rates are gonna have to go up. Just looking at the eight staff, uh, needed at each site, having to raise pay rates just to be competitive and get people to work, um, has been kind of budgeted into this year's budget. So we're looking closer to the three hundred dollar mark. But again, that'll encompass the program for a child Monday through Friday for eight weeks from nine to three.
So that would be three hundred for all residents, whether they're from South Whitehall or not. They'd just be within the Parkland School District.
Correct.
So I guess when I look at this, um, a couple of thoughts, um, bigger for me is not better. I think my, my vision always is to provide for the needs of the residents of South Whitehall. And if we're looking at a sixty percent resident rate, and then the rest are not from South Whitehall, then we're gonna expand this program out. It's gonna cost our residents a hundred dollars more. You know, you know, in a way, when we had the non-residents, it, it, it did help with budgetary and what we were looking at, so that's a concern for me. And, and secondly, I know neither Upper Mac or North Whitehall have had summer programs in the past, so obviously they would be leaning on our expertise and, and what we've done so far. But it looks like based on the proposal, we're gonna do the ordering of the supplies where, you know, there's a awful lot on South Whitehall's shoulders. And I also recall, and I might be wrong from the budget meetings, there was gonna be a part-time person hired to help you, you know, get this program off the ground. So when you look at all of those numbers, I mean, I've not seen a breakdown of how this all will work out financially. But my bigger concern is if we're meeting the needs, first of all, of our South Whitehall students. And is there a way then, and, you know, instead of creating this into a three municipality program, can we fortify and enrich the program that we have to, um, you know, make it a little bit richer of a program for the students in South Whitehall? Something that I throw out for the board's consideration.
Right, well, and I will just kind of reiterate, um, I believe it was, what Scott said is that, it, it is a no-cost program. So our goal when we set our fee is we look at how many hours everybody's gonna work. You know, what our, our typical budget is per site for field trips, for camp, for shirts, for supplies. Um, and I can tell you, it's about thirty-seven thousand dollars per site to operate. And then when we factor in the registration fee and the number of children in enrollment, that's where that number comes from, if that makes sense. So we, our goal is to not to make revenue off our residents on this program. Our goal is to not lose money, taxpayer money on this program. Our goal is to break as even as possible.
But.
And the, the raised rate, like I said, will be, whether we partner or not, we'll have to do that to. pay for the increased fees that we're looking to pay our summer staff this summer.
But right now, the South Whitehall residents will pay $100 more a student. And the North Whitehall and Upper Mac students who paid 250 last year are only going to have a $50 increase. So our residents are going to pay a higher rate.
If they were to. They would, no, you're exactly right. They would pay $50 more as a non-resident to resident. But again, looking at our numbers, unless the board wishes, you know, to change the kind of aspect of this program, if we were looking to break even again next year, we would have to charge roughly $300 per student for the eight-week program, nine to three for the whole summer to get to that break-even cost, whether, whether we partner or not, that's where we're going to be.
Well, again, just a question I will ask is, is there a need to expand our program numbers-wise? It doesn't sound like it. Are we're, we're open enough in providing for enough of our residents? And I guess I question, why would we expand this program out if there's not a need for South Whitehall? In general.
Mike, maybe I can jump in here too. I know there's been a few years where we have had a waiting list to get into the program. We haven't necessarily been able to open that up because of our staff to participant ratio. So typically in the first month of that program, we open up registration for residents only. And then it's also opened up for non-residents. Sometimes our residents don't sign up on time, program gets closed, we're at max capacity of a site. Rec desk actually creates a waiting list. So if somebody drops out, then we can push somebody in. So we have had an incident, you know, an incident every now and then where we end up with a waiting list, some of which our residents may be on. So I think by adding additional sites in these neighboring communities, we're actually providing more opportunity for our residents to participate in our program as opposed to taking non-residents and not allowing our residents to participate because they didn't register on time.
Thank you.
I understand that, Randy, but I think what Diane is saying is if we go from 200 to 300 for a resident and a non-resident goes from 250 to 300, there's a $50 increase versus a $100 increase. That, that's, okay, that's, you know, so our residents are really getting the short end of the stick on that. But I want to go a step further. Okay. And my question is, because of COVID, because of the work environment that people are in today and over the last couple of years, do we, what do we do for, for kids in South Whitehall Township who just can't afford to go to camp for some reason? Because their parents, for whatever reason, you know, got laid off because of the COVID and are left out and some of these kids should be in camp because maybe their parents could then go to work. I, you know, what do we do about those, those kids?
That's a very good question.
Well, I'd like to address it. That's why we're discussing it. It's going to be a real concern.
When I started, when I started here with the township in 2019, there was about two weeks or three weeks left in the summer program. Registration was done, all that was done. Then 2020, obviously COVID hit and we weren't able to run it. So last year was my, my first summer program. There was still a modified COVID summer program as far as the activities go and registration and everything like that. And I don't believe it came up last year. So I honestly don't know the answer.
I'd like to, I don't, I'm not saying we have to do it now, but I think we have to have a major discussion on that because I do not want to see a kid in South Whitehall Township who's, who can't afford to go to camp, be left out. You know, for no, no reason for, on his own.
Absolutely.
You know, just because some parent can afford it and they can pay the bill right away versus a kid who can't afford it and gets left out. You know, I think we need to address it. Maybe it's park and rec. I don't know if that's the meeting I need to go to. I will. But it's certainly a concern basically on what's happened in the economy in the last couple of years with COVID. Unfortunately, and the kids are, are the ones who are left out. It's not their fault, you know, that their parents may have gotten laid off or what have you. And there's, we've got to look at that somehow.
In support of Commissioner Kennedy's comment, this is simply an initial reaction. What comes to mind is that the definition of the purpose for ARP money is for COVID-related issues, costs, expenses. So I know the budget for this year is already made. But next year's budget isn't and we have, you know, the second complement of COVID money. So that might be the place to look for, for funding to address this issue that Commissioner Kennedy raises.
Absolutely.
And I thank you for bringing that up for consideration. It is something that I think this board should consider before we move forward with expanding. I mean, it's, have we identified the needs of people that can't afford? And are we reaching out to our residents first? And that's, that's always going to be my, my, you know, the thing that's in my, my vision to care for. And just to go back to the budget meeting, I, that was the first time that I had heard of this as a commissioner. And I, I understand that, Mike, you had a conversation with Randy and Scott and Mike about this. But I personally would like to see us take a deeper look into this. We're in the middle of looking at our park and open space plan, which is going to also look at programs. And have we done a dig, a deep dig into what we provide for our residents? Have we ever looked at providing summer activities for senior citizens? There are a group in our community that, you know, there's always a lot of focus on providing camp for the kids. Are we providing, you know, or can we, or is that something we can explore with the funds that we have set aside for? These are conversations that this board has never had before we start springing into a bigger plan with other townships. I just, I just don't know that the the vision of this plan that we're discussing is really focusing on how do we help South Whitehall residents? And that's, that's, I guess, my biggest question as we consider this.
Commissioner Hodges, sure. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I just wanted to add too, that I want to place our residents first. And bigger is not always better. I want to look for a really solid program. Make sure our residents are taken care of, our children are taken care of. And of course, those who are underprivileged and can't afford it, I'd like to see a means where they could attend to. So many questions I have here. I'm looking forward to more discussion about it being so new. But there's contracted services listed, there's a uniform fee, there's I can't even read it, the ratio 15 to one. I mean, that could be, if you have a group of active kids, that's a pretty big ratio, having been a camp nurse before. So I just wanted to draw attention to those. And thank you for bringing up the, the senior groups. I know at budget time, I was not yet a commissioner, there was a senior group who didn't even have a place to meet. And wish I could make something happen for them, the citronia, yeah, the citronia group. So I look forward to more discussion about all of this and helping not only our children, but our seniors as well.
So Mike.
Absolutely.
Mike, you've now gotten quite a broad range of feedback, including the proposed structure for the program, you know, a single South Whitehall program versus a joint program. Would you please tell us what your timing is? Your necessary timing when you would normally move forward so that we can appreciate the timing for any decisions that need to be made.
Sure, yeah. We typically open up registration for our program in early March. So it's going to be here before we know it. And again, that's why I wanted to come before the board and, and get any feedback, questions, concerns on this topic. As far as the programming aspect of it, again, I want to assure you that we are going to be having educational components, recreational components, physical activity, social activity. We're going to cover the whole gambit throughout the summer. That's what we do. Whether there are folks from other municipalities helping to put that plan together, whether I'm doing it myself, we're going to be giving a very enriching program at the three sites here in South Whitehall. I can promise the five of you that. And then as far as the ordering of stuff, I mean, we're going to design the shirt. We're going to, you know, if we got to order an extra 250 shirts for those two sites, or if we, you know, scale back and order 250 less, that's really kind of the difference as far as the ordering goes. A lot of the work will be done the same. A lot of the, the registration fees will be the same, I want to say. And I'm not advocating for this or against this. I'm just simply kind of stating the facts as far as some of the concerns that I've heard. I want to kind of say that I don't see them personally as, as too big of a concern. I think they'll land on my shoulders and I don't see them taking too much.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, so what will you do having gotten this feedback? I mean, I'm asking this for your own benefit and out of interest. It might be difficult for you to give some specific answer right now because you just got the feedback. But like in general, will you go away and do another assessment? Or you plan to provide more cost information based on the questions?
Sure, yeah. I can, I can provide a little bit more detailed cost information than maybe I would have typically brought next, well, two weeks from now. Obviously, I'm going to absorb this overnight here and, and kind of take everybody's comments and feedback to heart. And, you know, look at, at what we'll bring on the 16th in front of all of you. But, but I do want to echo everything you're saying. I mean, our residents come first in my eyes as well. So I want to make sure that our residents have the most effective, efficient and, and best program that we can give them. I mean, that's the ultimate goal of this.
And what are you referring to on the 16th? I'm not aware of what you're planning to bring before the board.
We'll be bringing a motion to move forward with the agreement or to not move forward with the agreement.
And Mike, that could potentially wait until the first meeting in March too.
Correct.
Well, I'm certainly no hurry to move forward with the 16th. I certainly have some questions, I think, from a financial standpoint. We're looking at increasing our residents $100 as opposed to non-residents 50. That's always been something that I've advocated for. Residents should be the focus. If we're using our programs to allow other Parkland area, you know, their rates should be different than ours because we are funding this program through our tax base. And I'm not sure that keeping a, one number for all is the fairest for our residents. I've got to think about those that are going to register in March.
Yeah. And perhaps I could speak with the other two townships if, if everybody's in agreement, you know, we could simply add that it's perhaps $300 for a resident and 350 for a non-resident. So if a child in North Whitehall wants to go to the North Whitehall program, they pay the resident fee. But if it's more convenient for, for mom and dad to drop them off at Kratz or on their way to work, then they can still come there, but perhaps pay more than our residents.
What I hear, Mike, is there's a lot of, we can do this and this, and I'm still not hearing, what is the benefit for South Whitehall to do this? I just, I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around how this is going to be good for our township. And that's really what I'm, I'm looking at, not just from a budget standpoint, but from service to our community. And I'm, I'm not convinced that there's a benefit. And why would we take on all this extra administrative and, you know, growth does bring with it more work? What is the benefit to us as a township and to our residents? I'm not clear. And I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, that's fine. I mean, the benefit, as far as I see it, the biggest benefit is having two other park and rec professionals help with all the, that administrative work. Because again, it's going to fall either on the one-man department that is in front of you right now or it will fall on three park and rec professionals who will be able to also log into rec desk, be able to get all the shirt sizes together, be able to help with the planning, be able to make sure that we are offering that well-rounded program, which I'll put together either way, like I said, but the benefit is having two other folks at the table to kind of help with that. And the last thing, it kind of touches back on what Randy said, is in the past, we've had residents that called the day before the program, I want to get my son in. It's filled. And that shouldn't happen if we open these sites. We should be able to get all of our residents.
Or maybe we could do a better job of alerting the public that this is open at this period of time for South Whitehall residents because only 60% were residents in the past. And if we're not doing outreach, maybe a little bit more effectively to make sure everyone's aware of what the deadlines are to reserve those spaces for our residents. Just, just a thought.
Yeah, no, I probably had a half a dozen calls this week already asking, when, when's it opening? When's it opening? So a lot of people look forward to it. I will do everything I can to get the word out there in all avenues that I can. And once I get direction from the board on which way we're going, then I can really start to, to get the word.
And couldn't we also hold back 20 spots or 10 spots if we know that there's always some stragglers to reserve them for South Whitehall residents who might be the last minute people who or five, I don't know, you know, pick a number. Is there something we can put a little cushion there so that our residents are not turned away? Because I would not want to see that in our programs ever.
And along with that, Mike, talk to your two counterparts also, if you would, if they have students who can't afford the program, if they've got a plan in their mind, they don't have a program right now, but maybe they've got some ideas. And also, as Diane said, on the 18th or 20th, hold back, you know, positions may be the same thing. You know, hold 10, 15 positions back for, for kids who just, they just can't afford it. That doesn't mean they should be deprived, you know, their parents are still paying taxes for the township. So that's something else that's going to be a strong issue with me.
I agree, 100%.
So thanks.
Yeah. And, and I will say, kind of on that note, we, the, the program, whether it's $200 or $300, is a very affordable program when compared to local daycares. I got, I got multiple questions last year of people calling and saying, is this a weekly fee? Or, you know, and then when we said it was $200 for eight weeks, you know, they were used to paying $200 a week at their daycare. So they were in, in shock and awe of the low price of the program for our residents and very appreciative of it, obviously. And again, when I explain that, the goal of this township summer program has always been to break even. I mean, that's, that's why we can offer it at such a low.
Are there any comments from the public on this topic? I know we've had a lengthy board discussion this evening. Anything else? No?
Thank you.
So just as a matter of direction, then, at the 16th, is this board in agreement that we would get more information from Mike as opposed to having a motion to, I don't even know what we're voting on, so I no, on the 16th. None of us have seen any agreement. I really don't know what, I don't know much more than what we've heard tonight, so everyone's aware.
Here's my final comment that goes to your point. We, we had a good discussion, covered a lot of ground. My concern is about communication. We had good communication, but you're leaving with an impression or thoughts about what you've been asked to do, right? The board has an impression of what we told you or asked you to do. I'm concerned there might be a gap. So I'm concerned that you're going to do a yeoman's job to come back to this board and answer our questions. And there may be a gap and through no fault of your own, it may fall short of the board's expectations. So I'm wondering, rather than let another two weeks go by and discover on the 16th that, you know, you didn't, you didn't meet all the expectations. Is there a way to communicate? Maybe you should take the lead to communicate, this is what I heard. This is what I heard you say, and this board could confirm, right? And this is what I'm going to provide you or do before the next meeting. And then that would help close this gap and be productive.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd be happy to follow up with, with each and every one of you. If anybody has specific questions, concerns, by all means, I'm a phone call away, so feel free to reach out to me. And again, I, I heard the feedback. The concerns are valid, so I just want to make sure that I, you know, really weigh out the pros and cons, you know, before the board, before we take the vote on whether to, to sign the agreement. Like I said, I've done that. I just, I didn't bring them, you know, here to lay out in front of you this evening. But I, I think personally, I think the pros outweigh the cons a little bit, but that's, I guess, to be determined. And we're going to have a great program either way.
All right, good. Thank you.
Okay, moving on then to old business, we have where's Dan?
Commissioner Kelly.
I'm sorry.
May I introduce something under?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't open it to the floor. So yes, is there anyone on the board who would like to bring something? Thank you very much, under direction and discussion. I apologize.
No problem. Thank you, President Kelly. Yes, in the last week or so, I forwarded a draft ordinance. And this ordinance, it's, it has four purposes, but the, the draft title is this, just for overall consumption is ordinance establishing committees of the Board of Commissioners. And it has four main purposes. One is to formalize the existence of current and potentially future standing committees in one document. The second is to establish a formal process for the The second is to establish a formal process for the selection of commissioners to these committees. It allows for the development of the specific function and responsibilities of these committees and the opportunity for the commissioners on these committees to make recommendations to the full board. The last one is, in my mind, a very important aspect of this as well. It's requirement of the committees, committee meetings to be available to the public. And that's a brief summary. What I would ask the board this evening to consider is approving this draft ordinance to be shared with the staff, Randy and his staff, as early as this evening or tomorrow. And that we, I would ask that we put this on the agenda for the February 9th workshop for further discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Osborne. Are there any comments to?
My only comment, Brad, as I said to you, as I, you need to put it on the workshop so the five commissioners can discuss it, which I think you agreed tonight.
Yes.
I don't see the point in Randy bringing it up to anybody in the staff. Your staff are already here, so they've heard it. But until we discuss it, why have the staff or Randy even involved? I mean, Randy's certainly involved as in their township manager, but let's discuss it as a board before we move it forward. That's all, that's just my comments.
I think that's a good point because we haven't had an opportunity to work on this as a board, and we may make substantial changes. And it might make sense to present that to staff once we've had a workshop to actually work on the document as a collective board.
Okay, that's fine. My thought was Randy is probably going to be in the workshop, and we could discuss it without his knowledge or having seen it before. But that was the purpose for suggesting that. It would also give him an opportunity to participate. But whatever the board's desire is.
I think it's appropriate to share with Randy, but I wouldn't say to staff for feedback at this point. Of course, I would like Randy to be in the loop with us.
Okay.
I think that's quite appropriate. I don't know what the rest of the board feels. I don't want to speak for the board.
I concur with that. I mean, obviously, Randy is the key point of contact, the entire administration manager. So I think he should be in the loop and have the opportunity to give initial feedback right along with the rest of the board. And stop there.
If the board's in agreement, we can certainly add this to our ordinance workshop next week after we deal with the flooding issue that we're going to talk about. If everyone's in agreement? Are there any public comments? And the noise issue? We've got a busy workshop.
We got four, right? So we have the flood mitigation study, new subcommittee formation, which would be this, and the noise ordinance. So just three.
Great. This will be, yes. Thank you, Commissioner Osborne.
Thank you.
Are there any other direction or discussion items from the board? So moving on to old business, Where's Dam? Randy, if you would, please give us an update if there's anything to add tonight?
Sure. Real briefly, I'm currently working with Michael Baker for them to provide an updated proposal to assist the township with the bidding, construction, and closeout of the Where's Dam project. Their previous contract is coming to an end and only took them through the permitting stage. So this is obviously a very important project, something which none of us on staff personally have an expertise in. It is a bigger project, needs somebody keeping a close eye on it, making sure our bid specs are accurate so we get quality bids back. And then somebody to be on-site on a relatively routine basis to make sure the contractor's doing what we're paying them to do, and then also to help close this project out. So I requested a proposal from Michael Baker to see what that cost may be. I have not received that yet, but I did want to bring that to the board's attention.
Do you have an expectation of when we would get that proposal?
I was kind of expecting to have it by now. Had this conversation last week, so any day.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions from the board on this matter? Any from the public? Moving on to old business, item B, comprehensive plan update. Dave Vanhart.
So just the comprehensive plan update. We have a workshop meeting scheduled February 8th, so next Tuesday. The, the last meeting we had was focusing on the process that will be following. This meeting, we're really going to start getting into goals and objectives and prioritization and discussion around those topics. The way it's set up is we start with goals and objectives, and then we start moving into different topic areas. If we breeze through goals and objectives, we just start going down the list and see how long it takes. But that's next Tuesday, and we're running a hybrid meeting, so it can be either in-person or virtually. But please attend, give your feedback. Public, please attend. We sent out an email blast, and then it should have been posted in the next day or so on the Facebook post. So we're trying to get the information out there.
Dave, if I could just ask a question, is this, this is over here.
I can't see mouths moving.
Is this still maintained advertising for a joint meeting of the board commissioners?
Still haven't made, yes, still advertised.
And I would just note that in terms of it being virtual, we must have a minimum quorum of president of the board of commissioners for it to be a joint meeting.
Thank you for that clarification. And thank you for sending out emails and reminders to residents. It's important for us to get as much community input as.
Yeah, we had a little snafu on which list to use, so there may have been multiple emails going through, but we got the right list eventually.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board, public? Thank you. Moving on to item 12, would be a, would need a motion to authorize payment of our invoice and disbursements. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes, I better, or we won't pay the bills.
That's it? Okay, I have a motion in a sec.
I do have a comment, though. I had the opportunity to go through the invoices, and unfortunately, it's only a couple of staff members here and Randy. But I'm going to make a comment that I made once before, not as a commissioner, but in another capacity. And I'm going to hope that when township employees who have any access to buying anything, I don't care if it's a razor blade or whatever, spend their money like it's their own. I hope they do that because in looking at some of these invoices, I don't believe that's being done in this township at all. And I've got questions that I will bring up with Scott, and I need specific answers to. Because I looked at some of these invoices, and what I pay, let's say something very unique or very specific, what I pay maybe $3 for, this township's paying $21. I'm like, there's got to be something more to it. So without getting into the specifics of that particular invoice, until I can talk to Scott specifically and ask him what it was, I just, I find it ridiculous that I can go somewhere and pay $2 or $3, and this township's paying 21. That's all I have to say. Spend the money like it's your own. It is our township taxpayer money. But when you have the opportunity to spend other people's money, sometimes it goes a little bit haywire. So, thank you, that's my comment.
Thank you for your comment, and I do think it's wise, as you said, to follow up with Scott Barrett, who will help you navigate through that. So we have a motion and a second to approve invoices. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There's no executive session, so I am at number 14, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
The move.
And a second? Second, all in favor, aye.
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 Very good. Good evening. Have a good evening, everybody. Thank you very much.